Good evening, welcome to the Winter School Committee August 31st, 2020 meeting at 6:00 PM. Calling the meeting to order, Patty, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Boncory?
Here.
Mr. Capabianco?
Here.
Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Swope?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Perrin?
Here. Okay, this meeting will be recorded and may be televised live. The pledge allegiance. Ms. Howard, can you please lead us in the pledge allegiance? We have a flag.
I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the chair anticipates going into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. And if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, then the chair so declares. I declare that that is the case, and I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Motion on its own, second by Mr. Matucci. Patty, can we get a, please get a roll call vote?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, we'll be exiting from this meeting and coming back live to the regularly scheduled meeting in the next, I would say, thirty minutes. And we are back from executive session. Do we have any public comment this evening? Patty?
No, there is no, um, no one has their hand up. There's no public comment at this time.
Okay, moving into general information recommendations. There are no delegates and visitors this evening?
There are none.
So our next is minutes of August 3rd, 2020, August 17th of 2020. Can I get a motion to take them both together?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Capabianco makes the motion, Ms. Swope seconds. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Patty, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, moving on to financial and business procedures. We have two warrants this evening. First being warrant SVW 21-2 in the amount of $245,765.26. Can I get a motion for that warrant, please?
So moved.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Swope, seconded by Mr. Matucci. Any further discussion on the warrant? Hearing no discussion. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory? Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Next, we have a payroll warrant, the amount of $157,606.82. Can I get a motion for that payroll, I can't even say it, payroll warrant SPW 21-03 in the amount of $157,606.82?
So moved.
Mr. Capabianco makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on the payroll warrant? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory? Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Same.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, our last financial transaction is a budget transfer, the amount of $5,000. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Matucci makes the motion, seconded by...
Second.
Second by Ms. Swope. Any discussion on the budget transfer? Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Buildings and grounds, there are none this evening. General reports, I don't believe we have any subcommittee reports coming back. So we'll go to the superintendent's report. Ms. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items today. Today was opening day for our teachers, and we welcomed back many of our veteran staff, as well as quite a few new staff members. We had our new teacher training on the 20, I believe it was the 27th of August, where we got to officially meet with all of our new staff. And got them to meet each other and learn an awful lot about the Winter Public Schools, get their technology set up, ask the questions they need to ask, and be paired up with a mentor, which is one of the most critical things that we can do for our new staff to go on board. So today's opening day was really weird. I'm gonna throw it out there as such. We have never experienced an opening day like this before. We're used to be coming together as a large group, reconnecting and socializing with each other, hearing about each other's families prior to us all convening in the auditorium, typically in the Hill Shapiro Center at Winter High School. Usually a great day for us to get together and just be proud to be teachers and educators in the system, talk about a lot of upcoming events, and get really excited to start the day and to start the school year off. We also spent a fair amount of time recognizing our new teachers, as well as our veteran teachers, and giving people the beloved pens and pins that you wait for in your tenure here in the Winter Public Schools. But today, we were able to do that in a different way. Definitely not a preferred activity for me as a superintendent. I held a webinar similar to what we're doing right now. However, I could not see people because of the number of people we were engaging with. The folks could see us. So on the webinar was the union president, our executive director of curriculum instruction and accountability, Ms. Lori Galvin, as well as Meredith Hurley, the town health nurse, and Tara Bowie, who is our lead nurse for the school system. We gave lots of information to staff initially. I talked a little bit about the strange situation we're in. I enjoy seeing people in front of me, being able to see their face, see how they're feeling as I begin my opening day, and then I typically gauge my conversation and my presentation based on the faces I have in front of me. I get to inject some humor. I get to see how that's going based on the way people look. And today, it was extremely difficult because I could not run the show the way I like to run it. What we were able to accomplish, however, is something that we felt strongly was critical on the first day back for all of our employees. And that was to go through many of what I would consider, after conversations with the union and many, many teachers, the top five or six things that were giving them anxiety about returning back to work. There was lots of excitement about coming back, but certainly, given the COVID-19 situation that we're in as a country, there was hesitation and concern. So we focused the day on health and safety and conversations around what our building protocols are and what we have built, with an understanding that we have ten days with our teachers in front of us before they have to start teaching our students. So the goal was not to overwhelm people, but to really touch on the things that would allow them to come back tomorrow and to start to learn about all of the protocols that we have in place. We talked a lot about mask wearing. We talked quite a bit about what we have done in the schools in terms of getting ourselves ready. We have, we're gonna go into much deeper discussion with them around that. But some of the things that they will see over the next ten days will reflect an understanding of the air quality. I put that in your packet tonight. We decided to go sort of above and beyond what we needed to do, and we had a company come out and do an air quality evaluation of our four school buildings. And as you could see from those evaluations that were done, and they're pretty thick, I think they're about probably about fifty pages worth of data to look at. The volatile organic compounds in our buildings all came back at a level that was described as the concentration of the VOCs and dust were found to be acceptable at the time of the assessment, which was about a week ago. So we had those assessments done right before school opened, and we'll be able to go into a little bit more detail to allow our staff, and we'll share this information with families as well, that the air quality in our schools is in good shape. We also talked about our HVAC systems, and we'll go into more detail with that with our teachers if need be. We have a filtration system in our schools that allows us to put filters in the system to keep the air clean. We have 100% outside air being circulated through our schools. And prior to our last change of filters, we had MERV 13 filters throughout our system. The MERV 13 filter is a high-quality filter. It is not a HEPA filter. Our systems do not, cannot support the HEPA filter, so those are our HVAC systems. So we had an engineer come out and assess each one of our systems and let us know what working condition they were in, what type of filtration they could handle, and was MERV 13 filter the best that we could put in that system right now? We learned that we could improve, we could increase the quality of that filter up to a MERV 14 or 15 filter. And I would like people to understand that the current filters that were in there prior to the changeover were also considered in the higher end of the MERV filtration systems. We made a decision as a school district to replace the filters that we have on the cycle that we're supposed to be replacing them with that higher-level MERV filter system. So the company that came out to, it was separate companies because there's separate HVA systems in the buildings. Those reports have not come back to us in writing yet, but verbally, we were assured that our systems are in strong working condition and that they will support the changeover in the MERV filters. And I believe the majority, with the exception of a handful of spots at the high school, have already been done. So Gorman Fort Banks, Arthur T. Cummings, middle school, and the middle school-high school complex, we are ahead of the filtration changing. So we weren't ready to do some of them just yet, but we are doing them anyway. So we're just waiting for the last packet of the 14s and 15s to come in. We have rooftop vents, so we talked a little bit about that. Those rooftop vents have all been checked by the companies that service them. The belts have been greased. We do know that we can and should be planning to replace a motor at the Fort Bank School and a motor at the Cummings School. Those motors have been ordered prior to this meeting. I did not ask if they have been received and installed as of yet. But as of last week, they had been ordered. And not, and it was not necessary to replace them immediately, but during this time, we felt as though it was a critical need. We talked a lot about sanitizer, and where sanitizing machines are throughout the school. Where sanitizing stations will be in every classroom. We talked about soap. We talked about working hot water, working windows, and the fact that we are a very fortunate school system in that our buildings are in really good working condition. We have spent the last couple of years ensuring that we were paying attention to the details, and that was certainly without knowing what we were going to be facing right now. So the attention to that work and the commitment to keeping our facilities up to par has definitely paid off in our ability to open up our school buildings. And we've ordered over $170,000 worth of personal protective equipment. That includes gloves, masks, goggles, face shields, plexiglass. Many of our, all of our offices have plexiglass barriers up now. We have classrooms in which, when students return, we will have plexiglass where appropriate, plexiglass in front of teachers' workstations and teachers' desks, a barrier between where the teacher is sitting and where the students are sitting. Our classrooms have been set up for social distancing of six feet apart in every classroom for when our students return. And in terms of signage, we have collected a cadre of signage from CDC, as well as some other companies that have made it, signage look a little bit prettier, a little bit more age-appropriate, and certainly reflective of equity among our students, especially our students of color. So we've paid some close attention to that, and so those signs are, in terms of support for the teachers, arrows on the floor, directionals, signs in the bathroom, wash-your-hand signs. If I see one more wash-your-hand sign, I wash my hands prior to COVID a lot, and now I just have a visual reminder about every three feet that I need to continue to wash my hands. That signage has been put up, and we're continuing to put it up in anticipation of our students. Protocols for cleaning, more importantly with our staff over the next ten days, we've been really working on paying closer attention to the staff, as that is our focus prior to our students returning. We know that our students are remote starting September 16th. That does not mean that we don't need to continue to prepare for them to come back to the buildings. But we felt strongly that having our staff comfortable in learning all of the protocols, such as that of the COVID waiting room, which is a medical waiting room in every school building in which students or staff members who are experiencing COVID symptoms will spend time in that room until it can be determined if they are safe to return to the classroom or if they need to be picked up by a family member. It's scary to have a COVID waiting room, and we felt strongly that our staff needed a fair amount of training on what to look for in terms of symptoms in themselves, as well as our students, and what would be the protocol for a student or a staff member to go into that particular space in our buildings, which will be monitored and supported by a healthcare member, and we are still outlining that. We have a nurse in every school building, full-time nurse in every one of our buildings. We are fully staffed with four nurses, and we are continuing to work on the COVID medical waiting room for, at the time when the students come back. Right now, with only staff in the building, it is sufficient to have the one nurse, and she, at the time, right now, it's all females, that they can handle those concerns or issues with staff members with one person supporting that. As our students come back, we feel strongly that we need to add staff so that the nurse can stay in the nursing office and the medical support person can sit with students or staff in the medical waiting room to allow them to follow procedure and policy until they can be medically evaluated by the school nurse. Some other interesting things, athletics. As of right now, being a red district, the MIAA has stated that schools could not start athletic teams, and we have an athletic subcommittee meeting that we will be scheduling either this week or early next week to talk about some changes that have come about in the last few days. The Northeast Conference Superintendent's, Principals, and Athletic Directors have gotten together. We're a small conference, so they're getting together to talk about the restrictions of the MIAA document that came out to see if we can't have some flexibility within our conference in terms of when we allow our athletes to play and whether or not we need to continue to have this floating season. So if you're staying in the red, they are asking you to move your fall sports to a float season. That became very controversial over the last few weeks. More to come on that. The MIAA's meeting with the Northeast group of athletic directors and principals. The principals actually make the decision about how they want to proceed, however, in our district. It's the athletic director, the principal, and myself who have a conversation about where that's going. So we'll be bringing that to the athletic subcommittee so that the school committee can have input in that process and so that we can bring you up to speed on that. We did a tech survey, a technology survey, over the last two weeks in which we reached, not a survey, a technology request form for our parents over the past two weeks. We had done a survey to see, back in June, to see if we were to continue in remote, what our parents would need for their students in their homes in order to have appropriate technology for any further shutdown as the school year opened, not anticipating a full remote model, but anticipating the hybrid model. So we received lots of feedback, and then we put out a form to request, for parents to request technology so that when school opens, we'll be prepared to, prior to school opening, allow our parents to have a Chromebook in their hands for each one of their children if they need it. At the time of the survey, 90% of our parents felt like they had sufficient technology for their children. However, I think reality has hit, and we have also discussed not wanting students in one home to have to share a Chromebook or a device with a sibling or with a parent because when we open up for remote learning or even on the remote days in hybrid, students would need to be engaging for a fair amount of the day, and it would not be easy to share a computer. So as...
My video on...
The technology request form was up until four o'clock this afternoon, and by four o'clock this afternoon, we had 475 parents request Chromebooks for individual students. So 475 students are what we are seeing as of today for the need. We closed the actual request so that we could get a handle on the final number for now, and we will certainly open that back up through the individual school buildings for those parents who either forgot or didn't have the opportunity or have a need in the future. It's pretty much broken down into, by building. So of the 475 requested Chromebooks, 42.3% of them are being requested for students at the Gorman Fort Bank School. And that's our kindergarten through second-grade students. Cummings School, 28.8% of the 475 sits at that school. And at the middle school, 28.8% of the 475 requests are coming from the middle school. You'll ask where the high school is. Our high school is the one spot in our district that is a one-to-one compatible school. So students in nine through 12, we already accounted for those students. They are one-to-one Chromebooks automatically. So this was to get an idea of, we already knew the idea of how many more we would need to distribute to families, but then we needed to drill it a little deeper and say, okay, where are those Chromebooks gonna go? We had proactively ordered through COVID relief money upwards of 700 Chromebooks. So 475 Chromebooks is a manageable number for us during remote learning. We will not necessarily be handing out the new Chromebooks, brand-new Chromebooks that came in. We may be using existing Chromebooks. Some of our families closed to 200 borrowed Chromebooks over the summer, which we have collected. So we will be redistributing those with the understanding that when we return to a hybrid model, those students will be bringing those Chromebooks back and forth during the hybrid model, and also understanding that we will still need to have several Chromebooks and technology within the building for those who are not old enough to carry those Chromebooks back and forth, yet still need to have them at home. We talked earlier, we are still negotiating a memorandum of understanding with the Winter Teachers Association, the Winter Teachers Union relative to the return to school. The next negotiation meeting we have is next Wednesday night. We are hoping to be able to have an agreed-upon memorandum of understanding, which helps us really just outline and make it crystal clear for our staff as to what the expectations are of the staff during the return to school and currently the remote learning that we will be entertaining starting September 16th. Tonight starts the first parent town hall, for lack of better terms. So our parents are getting anxious, and we know that. Our teachers are anxious and still anxious. So we've put out lots of information to our parents and felt, at this point in time, the principals felt as though they wanted that face-to-face contact with the parents. So tonight is the Gorman Fort Banks Town Hall. And on the first, which is tomorrow, the middle school is doing their town hall with parents at 6:30, and the parents have all been emailed to be notified directly by the parents, sorry, by the principal. On September 2nd, the Cummings School will be doing their town hall at 6:00. And on the 3rd, the Winter High School will be doing theirs. And they'll start with the ninth grade as a separate group at 5:00, and then they will move forward and do grades 10 through 12 at 6:30. If I have anything else, town hall. I believe that is it for my long-winded report.
Not long-winded at all. Personnel matters. Do we have any appointments, resignations? I know we have retirements. Things, or leave of absence?
We do. So we presently have two resignations that have come before us. One is for, hold on one second, I just wanna grab my agenda. So the first resignation is a chemistry teacher at the high school, as well as a history teacher at the high school. Both of those resignations have reflected, both people are taking positions closer to home. They complete exit surveys, so we are awaiting those exit surveys where we ask a host of questions that helps us work on retaining and recruiting staff for the future. And we have two retirements, and I'm just gonna read a blurb of each one of them and not the full letter, but I think it's, they're both very worthy of reading this. So Jean Famaletti is retiring after a long career here as a secretary in the Winter Public Schools. And she writes, "Having worked for the Winter Public Schools for the past 27 years, I have decided that the time is right for me to retire. The years have just flown by, and I would like to spend more time with my family. I have thoroughly enjoyed working with the administration, staff, and students at the E.B. Newton, the Willis, and the Fort Banks, and especially here at the Arthur T. Cummings. Everyone has been like family, and I will miss them." And there's some more verbiage in that, but I can tell you when folks learned that Jean was retiring, it was sad, but it was also happy. I think there were some envious people during this time that Jean is able to take that opportunity and retire to enjoy her family. So we wish her the best of luck. She does have a buyback request of unused sick days in here. I don't know if you take that up now or if that comes later.
I think we could take it up now. Can I get a motion to approve sick day buyback for both Eva Kearney and Jean Famaletti?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Swope. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Barry? Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Patty?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Matucci are muted.
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Perrin, if I just may read, the second retirement is Ms. Eva Kearney. And she writes, "This letter is to officially inform you of my intent to retire from my position as art teacher and creative arts lead teacher at Winter High School on October 30th. It has not been an easy decision to leave this position after 27 years of teaching at Winter High School. I have always considered Winter Public Schools a safe, caring, and wonderful place to work. Throughout my entire career, the system has enabled me to be the art educator I've always wanted to be. It has given me the professional respect I deserve and has allowed me to build upon the previous..." and has allowed me to build upon the previous art program that I inherited to create the strong curriculum that exists today. A curriculum that provides high school students with many varied experiences and guides them to develop their artistic skills and encourages them to become more creative thinkers for the 21st century. I'd like to thank the town of Winter, the Winter Public Schools, the many principals and superintendent and superintendents and school committee members that I have served under in the past twenty-seven years. Though through my position at Winter High School, I have been afforded opportunity to reach and teach so many students, families, and community members in the town, which I love and live. I intend to remain here for the community as much as possible. I am grateful to have spent the bulk of my career in Winter. It has always been a truly unique and wonderful place to both live and work. Eva, just like Jean, will be absolutely missed by the entire teaching community. So, and you've already taken up her vote, her request for buyback. We have a couple of postings. Grade two teacher at William P. Gorman, a science teacher at Winter High School, social studies teacher at Winter High School, an art teacher at Winter High School. We've also posted mentoring positions, an ELA teacher at the Winter Middle School, and a technology integration specialist at Winter High School. In terms of a leave of absence is reflective of the Gorman Fort Banks position in which we have had a teacher take a leave, request and be approved for a leave of absence reflective of the collective bargaining agreement to do so. And I believe, I believe that is it for personnel.
Okay, moving on, second reading and adoption of mask policy, JICA dash one. I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to accept the adoption of the mask policy, JICA dash one?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, seconded by Mr. Boncory. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Patty?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. We come now to the homeschool application approvals. Lisa, can you bring us through that, please?
Yes, I can. I'd actually, Laurie Gallivan, our executive director of curriculum instruction and accountability, has stepped up to the plate and taken on the process of reviewing homeschool applications. So homeschool applications have been coming to us from parents. We've had many homeschool applications in the past. Both Laurie and I dealt with this in a prior life in different situations, in different settings. So there's a fair amount of background in the process itself. We've included that process in your packet. And after reviewing the process that we have been following here in Winter, we've decided just to make sure that we are streamlining that, especially given the number of homeschool applications. And we wanted to make sure that our families were aware of the process and understood the process. So Laurie has been key in explaining to the many families who have either reached out to inquire about the process or who have actually begun the process of submitting applications. So Laurie has reviewed each one of those. And Laurie, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but it does require that the school committee approve the recommendation of students who we believe have met the requirements to be taught in a homeschool environment.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that, and I appeal to anyone out there that might be watching as well from home, but to please if they are planning on homeschooling their children, that they do reach out and that they do, you know, happy to send them the process. I've heard that there are other families, but these are the only applications that I've actually received and been able to work through. And it is my recommendation that these seven before you be approved. I do know there's one or two in the wings that I've had some conversation with. But I have a feeling that there's more out there. I just don't think that parents necessarily know what the process is. So I just encourage anybody to send an email either to the reopening email address that we have out there at reopening@winterk12 dot ma dot us or to me directly, l gallivan@winterk12 dot ma dot us. And I don't know if you had any questions about the process or anything that we spoke for you.
Ms. Gallivan, just for the purpose of parents who are listening to this, homeschooling includes you deciding to teach your children from your home and you running the program itself. If you are even using an outside vendor to work with your if they are not enrolled in the Winter Public Schools, attending our remote learning in September, or they're not in a private, private school or a Catholic, private Catholic school or a charter school or a school for students with special needs in which you are sharing with the community. You, under child find, are required, we're required under child find to know where your children are. So if you're also up at school at the beginning of the school year, we will be reaching out to you to ask you what your intent is with your children and the school department in order for your child to engage in homeschooling. You do have to have the vote, you do have to submit the documentation and it does have to be approved. And if not, like I said, we need to figure out where you are with your children.
Right.
Why is that we report to them where all the children are?
Right. So we, if someone enrolls their child in either the Greenfields Massachusetts Virtual Academy or they enroll their child in TECA, those are public online schools. So in order to enroll in those programs, they would have to unenroll in Winter in order to be able to enroll there. And we'd have a line of communication so that we would know that they were enrolled. We'd get a letter from either Greenfield or from TECA saying, this child is now enrolled in our mass virtual school. But there are a lot of online private programs. And if you're using one of those, that's still technically, you're still technically homeschooling them if it's not a public school, unless it's private like, you know, Immaculate Conception in Revere or somewhere like that. Then that's just private schooling. That has nothing to do with homeschooling. But I know that sometimes that, people get confused as well. If you're enrolling them at any other place that will require they enroll and unenroll from Winter, that does not constitute homeschooling. It's only if you are the lead educator for your child, whether you're having them follow some type of online, whether you're using different curriculum from the mass standards and from different resources online, Khan Academy, you know, Saks and Math, all those different programs, that's still you as the educator. And those will have to, have to do the homeschooling approval process because as Superintendent Howard said, otherwise they're gonna be marked absent as long as they're on our rolls and then we're required to follow up and, you know, make sure that they're spoken for.
Thank you, Laurie. Ms. Swope?
Through the chair. Laurie, have you had? Let's see, I'm not sure how to phrase the question, but are you finding that parents that are applying for homeschooling need some support from you to make sure that they are preparing the materials correctly?
I would say the ones that I've had, for the most part, are well thought out, well planned, clearly done their homework, have, you know, looked at different programs, have looked at the mass standards. You know, I help give a little bit of direction here and there as far as what the easiest way for them to format things might be in order to turn things into me. You know, some different programs that you use, you can go online and print out their written curriculum and turn it in so I can review it. Others are online programs, so I've just had them share with me what the programs are and then I was able to go in and research myself on the programs. I can go on the websites, look through what their curriculum is online so that people don't have to print out stacks of pages for me, that kind of thing. But I think the ones that I have gotten insofar, these seven were, you know, put together well, well documented, and I think well researched.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Gallivan. Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation to approve those applications for homeschooling.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci. Can I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Ms. Powell. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. We now come to our retirement citations. I believe there are two, Lisa?
Yes, there are two.
For Joyce English and one for Kathy Kostonas. I'll read them. Whereas Joyce English has completed thirty years of service to the students of Winter and Joyce English has been a devoted and loyal friend and colleague. And Joyce English has a strong positive impact on scores of Winterb's students through her display of genuine concern for young people. Therefore, be it resolved that the school committee of the town of Winterb expressed its congratulations and best wishes and that it is made part of the official minutes of the Winter School Committee on August thirty-first, 2020. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Swope. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Matucci. Can I get a roll call vote on that, please, Patty?
Yes. Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Boncory? Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. And then we have a second resolution for Kathy Kostonas. Whereas Kathy Kostonas has completed twenty-nine years of service to the students of Winterb. And whereas Kathy Kostonas has been a devoted and loyal friend and colleague. And whereas Kathy Kostonas has filed, has had a strong positive impact on scores of Winterb's students through her display of genuine concern for young people. Therefore, be it resolved that the school committee of the town of Winterb expressed its congratulations and best wishes and that it is voted and made part of the official minutes of the Winter School Committee on August thirty-first, 2020. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the citation.
Motion by Ms. Powell. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay. No unfinished business. Any public comment at this time, Patty?
Yes, we have Karen Chavez.
Good evening.
Good evening, Karen.
That was a very, that was a very long thirty-minute executive session, I have to say. I kept going back and forth between you and the middle school meeting there.
Okay.
My first two questions, you can't answer, Lisa, because you haven't signed an MOU yet. I was just wondering about returning teachers and what's gonna affect any of your classroom instruction. But you can't answer that right now. Also, what special attention between you and Ms. Gallivan is being done for the sped kids and the IEP students? Are they gonna be back in school or are they gonna be doing remote? It's just, I'm just curious, that's all. And where I can't take part in any of the town hall meetings because I'm not a parent, I was just curious.
So through the chair, you can, I don't think we have any more public comment. If you would like me to speak about something I may have left out of my superintendent report.
I don't, yeah, I don't recall you saying anything about the IEPs or the sped kids.
Is it okay for me to follow up on something left out of the report?
Yes, please.
I'll do it quickly. I'm working very closely with Jen O'Connell. The Department of Education and the commissioner has made it very clear that when we're in remote, we need to do, depending upon our individual school situation, the community spread, we need to work towards, obviously, our first group of students to get back into school when it is safe to do so is our high-need students, which includes our students with special needs, our ELL students, as well as our students who really struggled to engage during the spring when we had remote learning as a first-time go-around. And so we've kept quite a bit of data on that. As we look towards how we're gonna transition back to school, those students will remain our priority. And if it is safe to do so, we will bring them back potentially before other students do come into the building in a phased-in approach. We have to watch the matrix in the community and continue to make sure that it is safe to have students in the buildings and with each other. So it is certainly a high priority for us to move forward as soon as we can. And Ms. O'Connell is gonna be working with our families, doing similar to the town halls that you're she's been working with the Parent Advisory Council quite often. And their leadership there is excellent. Mrs. Mendieta is a very strong voice for our students with special needs. Because it's an interest of mine that I don't like to let go of, Jen keeps me up to speed as to how those conversations are going. So that communication is happening with our families. And Jen O'Connell is also gonna be doing a town hall in collaboration with the Parent Advisory Council and our highest-needs parents. And she does bring them up to speed through emails and conversation, discussions, letting them know the direction we're heading.
Thank you.
Any further public comment, Patty?
Yes, we have Samantha Bracy.
Hi, Patty. Thank you. Hi, everybody. So I just wanted to flag a couple of concerns coming out of the Fort Banks parent info tonight, the parent info session tonight. I definitely appreciate the effort to relay information to people. And I hear you naming it, Lisa, as a town hall, which I would say it definitely wasn't to me. I think to a lot of people, a town hall involves some sort of dialogue and it was definitely not a time where families could voice concern or opinion. Some questions were taken in the chat, but there wasn't a lot of time for that. And I saw families asking things like, I'm an essential worker. I don't know what I'm supposed to do. Like, I need help. And those things were not answered. And there wasn't any indication that there would be any additional conversation or forum for that. And then there was also something that was named around like intentionally keeping students together who are in pods outside of school. And the inequity that that breeds really worried me. The people who have their kids in pods are people who can afford to do that. And many of us cannot. And it doesn't feel equitable to be placing kids in classrooms like due to the nature of like arrangements that parents have had power and access to create outside of school. So I don't know how those things are being followed up on, but those, there definitely needs to be more conversation and opportunity for families to give input. And prioritizing keeping pods for like certain families and certain students doesn't feel equitable to me.
Anything further, Ms. Bracy?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. We appreciate your public comment.
Is anyone gonna respond?
Well, I can, I will follow up with Ms. Pearson and have, I wasn't part of that meeting tonight. I do know the details or the plan for the meeting, but not having had the opportunity to watch or to have further conversation with Ms. Pearson because I'm in this meeting. I will follow up with Ms. Pearson and I will express your concerns to her as well.
Thank you. I would say it was a concern of many people as well, not just me. Thank you. I would say it was a concern of many people as well, not just me.
Thank you. Do you have any further public comment, Patty?
No, we do not.
Okay. Any public relations this evening? Ms. Swope? Ms. Boncory? Ms. Barry?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question, please, of Superintendent Howard? Okay, quick. I just, we talked about sports and, you know, how the, you know, the Northeast Conference, and you all are meeting independently. And I wanted to ask about extracurricular activities and other clubs, like the drama club and whatnot. And it's fine if, you know, we've not gotten there yet, but I just wanted to make sure that that was still something that was being discussed.
It definitely is something that is being discussed on the same, with a lack of, on the same level playing field as athletics is being discussed. We're just not there yet.
Okay.
We provide that.
Matucci, everything for public relations?
Good, thanks.
Ms. Powell? Mr. Capobianco had to leave the meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Matucci makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Barry. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.